Are we ready? Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to City of Everett Planning Commission Meeting, Tuesday, May 5th. And we'll start out with roll call.
Chair Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sand?
Here.
Commissioner Adams?
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Here.
Commissioner Jordison?
Here.
Commissioner Beck?
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Here.
All right. And we'd like to welcome, so we have two new members. Kathryn Beck was here at our last meeting, and then tonight, Michael Zelinski joins us as an alternate. Welcome to both of you. And our first order of business tonight is approval of the minutes. And this is from our April 21st Planning Commission Meeting. Did any, did everybody have a chance to review the minutes? And anybody have any comments or suggested changes? Kathy, I had one change I see on page, bottom of page eight, where we're referring to tonight's meeting on the second line, so last paragraph, second line, it refers to March 5th. It should be May 5th.
Yep. Thank you.
Anybody else have any changes to the minutes? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from April 21st?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Zelinski?
I'm standing.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
I'm standing.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. And the microphones, you have to push the button to turn on your mic, just to make sure everybody is aware since they're trying to pick up our voices. So next on our agenda are reports from Planning Commission members. Anybody have any items for the good of the order tonight? I guess we'll start down at your end, Michael.
I'm going to defer to Greg, but we had an interesting meeting today with Methune on Everett Station. You want to give a?
Go ahead.
So Ed Peterson, Greg, and Craig Scottle is at.
Scottle.
We basically went down to Methune to talk about doing some, helping us with doing some renderings on the Everett Station to look at what the possibilities could be. And so we're, there's steam that's kind of gathering in terms of taking a harder look at the area and seeing what the future holds, so.
And we might double check with the Planning Director, but I had thought sometime in our work program, we would be doing maybe a subarea plan or an area study of that area.
Good evening, Alan Giffen, Planning Director. That is correct. After we are complete with the major comp plan update, we will, at some point, be beginning a subarea planning effort that'll look at a little bit larger area than the Everett Station area zoning. But the effort that Commissioner Beck was referring to is something that's been initiated by property owners and businesses in the Everett Station area, and the city has been participating. I don't think we had anybody there today, but it's a group that meets on a monthly basis or maybe even more so, more often than that, and is kind of developing some of their own priorities for the station area, which could lead to some possible planning and zoning changes.
Okay. Thank you. Other reports?
Just want to wish everyone a happy Cinco de Mayo.
Thank you.
Kathryn gave my report.
Okay.
No report.
No report.
I don't have anything else either. So our one item this evening is a public, oh, I'm sorry. I should see if staff has some comments. Sorry.
My only comments are that we will have a meeting on the 19th to talk about the I-502 marijuana regulations, land use regulations, possibly a decision hearing, and perhaps some other code amendments that we had talked about at the last meeting related to the definition of family.
Okay. Thank you. And this actually is an opportunity for any comments from those of you citizens who would like to talk about anything other than our one item, that's a report, learning a public workshop on the transportation element as part of the comp plan update. If you've got comments on that, we can address those later in the agenda. But if anybody has any comments, please feel free to step up to the mic. If not, then we will move to our item number one. So it's a public workshop on the transportation element, and I believe the Planning Director will begin.
Good evening, Alan Giffen. The transportation element, part of our 10-year update of the comprehensive plan, is being managed by our engineering division, and we have a consultant that is preparing materials for us. And I'll introduce Tim Miller, our traffic engineer, and he will give us a little bit more background and introduce our consultant.
Hello, Tim Miller, City Traffic Engineer. So we have retained the services of a firm called Fair and Peers, F-E-H-R and Peers. And Chris Brayland will be here tonight to present just a brief overview of the preliminary work that they have reached to this point in the contract. And so he will have PowerPoint, we'll get it up here momentarily when we load it onto the computer, and then he'll be able to present that and be able to entertain questions following that. So if you give us a moment, I'll get Chris up here. And he's typing.
I guess while we're waiting on that, I'll give you a couple of updates on actions that the commission recently took that have also been acted upon by the city council. The first would be that the Trinity Lutheran College Student Housing Amendment has been approved by the city council on April 22nd, and also the ordinance amending the boundary line adjustment code language related to encroachments and gaps was also approved on the April 22nd city council meeting. So just update for some work that the commission recently worked on. And I don't know how to, I do sing a little, but I can't dance very well, so I'm just going to, I'm going to refrain.
It's my job to dance, right? Yeah, you can just pull that up. Okay, well, it's doing, I don't know where is it? Oh, does it go to the TV?
What makes the screens turn off? There we go. There we go. There we go.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Chris Brayland. Technology always works right when you need it. Here we go. Okay. My name is Chris Brayland. I'm a principal in the, our principal at Fair and Peers. We're a Seattle-based transportation planning and engineering firm. And as Tim had mentioned, we're working with Public Works Department on updating the transportation element for the comprehensive plan. And I'm going to go over with you all today sort of what this element is. You probably have some familiarity with it, but I'll give a little bit of background, where we are on the project, some existing conditions reports that we've, analysis that we've completed to date, and then a little bit of a glimpse into the future conditions, which is really what the meat of the transportation element is trying to address, and then go over some next steps. And as was mentioned, this is preliminary. This is literally hot off the press in terms of the data that we're going to be showing you for future conditions. So I'll be mentioning that a couple times. So we're not all the way through burnishing the travel model results, but we wanted to give everybody a little bit of a heads up as to what we're seeing and how this is going to affect us moving forward. So with that said, the transportation element is a required piece of the comprehensive plan, and it's really a, I always view it as a function of the land use element. Land use drives the show in the comprehensive plan, and transportation element is there specifically to ensure that the transportation investments are there or are being planned to accommodate that land use. So it ensures that infrastructure is there. It's an important piece of facilitating intergovernmental coordination, and that's a big piece of what in our work with both the planning and the Public Works Department is, we're going to stress particularly as it relates to transit in this next element update. And this element also clearly defines the goals of the city as it relates to transportation and its interface with land use, and the policies of how will you get there, how will you implement the transportation actions to meet your goals over time. And then what most people identify the transportation element with is this big list of future projects, a capital project list of what are we going to invest into over the next 20 years to be able to accommodate that growth. So that's really what we're working on with the element update. So what I like to sort of reflect upon people is what is a fundamental sort of tenet of a transportation element update? It really is all about all modes. So it's about developing a balanced multimodal approach for all modes, cyclists, transit riders, pedestrians, motorists, and trucks and heavy vehicles. And what we're working with and what our basic philosophy is the idea of a complete network, or what we call a layered network. There's been a concept of complete streets that's been around for a number of years, but a lot of times, complete streets try to do too much. There's really only so much right-of-way out there in a given area. And to have a street that can be great for pedestrians, and bikes, and transit, and trucks, and cars, well, it might be, you know, 200 feet across and not really work well for anything. It's just unrealistic in many cases. Complete streets as an element of a complete network that can accommodate all of those across an area is a great idea, and it's about balancing those modal needs. And that's something that Everett's done well over the years in setting up in their planning, is this idea of a, sort of a layered network, and something that we will be pushing further as part of this plan update. So where are we on this project? So we basically got kicked off late last year, and we worked with the Public Works Department to collect a lot of data over the spring, and that data collection has been completed. That forms the basis for existing conditions, which I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking with you all about. And that kind of grounds us as to where are we today and how do we move forward from where we are. We've done some initial policy audits to look at what are the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan, and how do they mesh with the goals and policies elsewhere in the comprehensive plan as it's currently being updated, and also looking at what do external agencies and reviewers look at specifically for the transportation element. We're looking at guidance from the PSRC and guidance from the Department of Commerce that have specific guidance as to what shall be in a transportation element. And those change on every cycle. This cycle is no different, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. The travel modeling has just been completed, and this is a big milestone in the project for anybody who knows about the transportation planning process. We've looked at existing conditions, but we need to take a look 20 years into the future. And so we've worked with the planning department to get a sense of, from their work on updating the land use element, we translate that into a travel model to forecast future travel conditions, and that is basically just been wrapped up from our initial run at the beginning of this week. And so we're giving you really the very first kind of unpolished look at that. And over the next several weeks, we're going to be working with the Public Works Department to look at that data, refine some, begin refining of the project list, and start to document how, what are we seeing affects the goals and policies. And then moving forward, we're going to be working with the TAC to start to take a look at more of the pieces of the transportation element. So you guys are getting really the first peek at that future conditions analysis. So I'm going to walk through just the background piece, the existing conditions. This document is complete. It's been cycled through Public Works, and this is sort of the first half of the transportation element, so to speak. And so we lifted out some pieces to share with you all here tonight, just again, to get some background information as to what we've done. And it's covering these topics, and again, it's a truncated version that I'll be presenting here, so feel free to ask questions. But I'm going to talk a little bit about population employment growth, or sort of over time and where we are today, how people get around, and the transportation networks that they move on, and then level of service. How is the system operating? And this mirrors very much what we're going to look at in the future condition, is that there's new growth that will be coming. How will people get around in the future, which is partially an outcome of investment decisions and policies that the city will be making? And then what are the resulting networks after investment decisions are made that we would end up with? So this is really sort of the same framework that we use to evaluate conditions in the future. So just some background. We took, looked back a ways at population in the city and jobs in the city, and there's been, despite Everett being one of the sort of older, more established communities in the region and in Snohomish County, there's been a fair bit of growth over the past, say, 15, 20 years, and particularly on the jobs front, and I'm sure that's of no surprise to you all who live here, but there's been a lot of job growth in the city. And based on forecasts from the county and PSRC, that is going to continue. So in 20 years, there's expected to be another 60,000 or so folks and another 55,000 jobs in the city that we're in part planning for. So how do folks move around today? This is just a snapshot of how people move around. It's a little tricky to read there, but for the most part, driving is the dominant mode in Everett. And this looks not that atypical for other cities in Snohomish County, although transit usage is higher here in Everett than in other Snohomish County cities, as is the amount of walking within the city in terms of how people get around. And we're going to be looking in the future at how does this change from just, from what the travel model says, and what are goals that we would want to set specifically for the urban centers and the manufacturing industrial center of how would we want this to look? That's a requirement from the PSRC. So what does that look like? This was a citywide snapshot, but obviously, there's a lot of variation across the city. So what we did is we extracted that information down at a subcity level, and this map shows darker areas have more non-auto use than areas in lighter color. And you can see some areas like the downtown, not surprisingly, has more folks who don't drive as their predominant means of transportation than in other parts of the city. Payne Field is a, the northern area is an example of where there's less non-auto use for travel. So again, it varies across the city, and this is in somewhat a reflection of densities, transportation services that are provided, and how people tend to get to places of employment. So we, again, you'll see a little bit of a snapshot of how that looks in the future. We've gone and gathered all the city's data on the pedestrian and bicycle networks and put that into GIS and mapped that. And this is, it's hard to read, but those blue areas are where there are sidewalks and other pedestrian facilities. So what you can see, again, in the older parts of the city, it's more established than in the southern parts of the city where there's, you know, sort of more inheritance of annexed growth, basically. And the bicycle facilities, the city's got a pretty aggressive bicycle plan, but under existing conditions, there's bicycle facilities only in a handful of locations. We've also taken a look in an inventory of transit. Again, we're going to be looking at transit and transit's role in the future. On the left, we have sort of a transit route map. The pink lines are Everett Transit routes. The blue lines are other service, predominantly community transit with some sound transit in there as well. And we have what I call a measles map showing boardings. So that's on this side here. The bigger and darker the dot, the more boardings there are on the buses. And we worked hand in hand with Everett Transit, who collected all the agency's data together and helped us create this. So Everett Station is, pops up as a major transit location, as does South Everett Park and Ride, for example. But you can see the usage along Evergreen Way corridor, for example, and quite a bit of transit activity as well in sort of the northern part of, in downtown Everett as well. So again, this is all just to provide context of transit's, while not a dominant sort of mode in the city, it's more, more of an emphasis for travel than in many other parts of Snohomish County, and this is sort of a reflection as to where that's occurring. And the last piece that I'm going to share with you from the existing conditions report is a look at level of service. And right now, we have auto level of service because that's all that we track, and that's something that we'll actually be updating as part of this plan. But we're looking at existing 2015 PM peak hour auto level of service. And the way to read this is red lines are areas that are more, much more congested. So US 2 and I-5, for example, are stop and go. It's level of service F. Whereas areas that are green are more free flow, and these are, again, on a sort of a segment basis. They kind of average what the conditions are over a stretch. And areas that are yellow are in between. They're congested. Certainly during the peak times, you might be at a traffic light and not be able to get through in one cycle in some of these cases, but they're not severely congested. And this analysis is really a mirror of what was done on the previous update and gives a good snapshot as to where are the hotspots the city might want to look at for transportation investments to help move vehicles and transit that use these routes are an important part of that stream, and also areas where, how can we accommodate other modes where we have capacity that is not being fully utilized by autos? I've never been a big fan of the letter grades, A to F from travel, and if we were to ask an economist, what is sort of the grade of the system, it would be inverted. If you have an LOSA facility, meaning that it's wide open at 5:00 in the afternoon, there's a few cars on a lot of pavement, well, that's not the best use of a lot of money spent on that facility. So that's one way that we like to look at from this layered network standpoint, is you have a limited right-of-way. You can't generally widen a lot of streets. There's built stuff all over the place, and it's expensive. We want to make sure that we're maximizing the use of the right-of-way for the whole network for all of those modes. And so this map helps give us a snapshot for, under existing conditions, what it looks like. But very importantly, we're going to, again, you'll see in a moment, look at that in the future to see, well, what can we do and what choices can we make to accommodate people however they want to get around the city? So with that said, I'm going to talk a little bit about what are some areas of emphasis in terms of this update. There's different cities do different things with transportation element update. Some cities basically do a find and replace of the date and say, we've updated it, we're done. Other cities do a wholesale rewrite and basically throw out the old and bring in the new. After working with the departments here, we've gone what is, you know, perhaps the most typical route, but, you know, we're not throwing it away because there's a lot of great bones, but we are going to be focusing on a few areas that we think need to be addressed as we look forward to the next 20 years. And those are emphasized here on this screen. First off is multimodal level of service. You might recall, this is auto level of service, and it can be a measure for transit that uses those routes as well. But multimodal level of service is more explicitly looking at what is the quality of the system for other modes. Bicycle and pedestrian are two modes that are really not at all reflected in this map. And this multimodal level of service is a required sort of element to include in an update from PSRC and Department of Commerce, and that's something that we're working with the city. We've already had a workshop with Public Works to say, what should a multimodal level of service platform look like? And we've come up with a framework that we're now beginning to test to make sure that it fits well with the city. So that's a big piece that we're updating that will look a little different than the current. Another big area of emphasis is to prepare and plan for light rail. This is something that when we were initially meeting with the city, we want to be in front of sound transit. We've worked with, I've, Fair and Peers and myself have worked with a lot of jurisdictions that are working with sound transit as they're actively designing things. That's a lot harder to do when they say, you can't change that, it's 90% design right now, than when we're in the very early stages to say, here's what we'd like, here's policies that can guide how the actual design comes together. This is obviously a big piece for this project, and it also affects Everett in some other ways. Everett's unique in that it has its own transit system. If transit's not integrated with this major investment, then, you know, we want to be able to have some say into how, not necessarily what does the route structure exactly look like, but how shall that be developed as the system gets more definition and moves forward? That's an important part of what we'll be looking at. Again, preparing for future land use and demographic changes, one piece that we are going to take a look at is not only, we know kind of these land use changes, but one thing that's interesting that's sort of different from, I've been doing this for not terribly long, but for more than 10 years, but recently, there's been a pretty strong shift in demographics in terms of how the demographics use transportation. That really has not been an issue in the past. In the past, it was pretty well set that, well, we know mode split today, we can play around with it at the edges in the future, but today, we're seeing a younger generation and an older generation who have different travel characteristics than they would have if you have taken that group and plopped them back 20 years ago. Younger folks tend to own fewer cars, drive less, be more interested in taking alternative modes. And with an aging baby boomer population, they, while they were very much in a driving age, they're also showing much more penchant for, not necessarily not driving, but driving less, going to one car instead of two vehicles. And as the population gets older, being more reliant on other means. These are important trends that are affecting everybody, and we're going to bring in a little bit of a discussion in the update about what that means for Everett. And again, a big piece is to refine the project list. There's a big capital project list that a lot of those projects still may make sense, and we're going to work with the Public Works Department to basically scrub through that and say, which ones are great to carry forward, which ones really don't make a lot of sense anymore, given financial constraints and other priorities, and which ones are new that we've not really thought about before, but must, might be necessary moving forward. So those are the big areas of change that we'll be focusing on as part of this update. So now here's the, here's the new stuff. So we're going to take an initial look at these 2035 conditions. And again, what I'm going to show you here, it looks kind of rough because it literally is. I have Sarah here from my office, who is working hard on getting some of the data prepared. We still need to verify some pieces. It's not 100% through our QC process, but it's, it's mostly there, so I'm confident in showing you the general themes that we're going to play out with. But literally, this just came out of the oven, so, you know, we need to see how it settles after it sits and we get a chance to look at it, but I wanted to share it with you regardless. So I'm going to focus on population and employment growth. We kind of showed that there's past growth trends. Well, of that new growth that I talked about, where is it going? Because that's obviously where there's more growth going. You need to be able to provide people access to that and do so in a way that's good for economic development and quality of life, and that's something that's key when we do these plans to think about. We're going to take a look at transit trip growth. We did assume what happens in a 2035 scenario, and in that, we took the liberty of saying, well, what happens if there's light rail? How does that, what does that look like? What does that mean? And we're also going to take a look at level of service. So let's take, dive into those details. So starting with household growth, so again, darker is more growth, lighter is less growth. And you can see that the growth is, tends to be more concentrated along sort of corridors and in, around the college, for example. And this is a reflection of sort of the land use planning, that that's where the growth is being concentrated. There's not, there's not greenfield type of development here in Everett, so to accommodate growth, it's going to be infill. And infill is more concentrated around existing transportation infrastructure as opposed to being further out or in single-family neighborhoods that are less able to accommodate that growth. Employment growth, obviously, in the manufacturing industrial center around Payne Field, there's a lot of growth anticipated, as well as sort of in the north end of the city and along Evergreen Way, again, where there's concentrations of growth from employment that's being, we're seeing from both, again, forecasts from the region, but modified with the assistance of the planning department to make sure that we're consistent with the other elements of the plan. Transit trip growth, same story. Actually, the light pink color is where we're not seeing a lot of. a lot of new transit trips. Recall that there are base, there are transit trips already there to begin with. But where we're looking at is new transit trips. The darker areas are where they, we expect more growth. And this is showing growth in peak hour transit trips. And so we have the light rail alignment shown there. And not too surprisingly, we have the transit network as it stands today, plus light rail, minus the sort of service that duplicates the light rail. So I just wanted to make sure that that's clear, that for example, the 500 series from Sound Transit that basically is serving what light rail is, is not assumed under this situation. But we do have the underlying Everett Transit Service and the local community transit service that gets into the city as well. And so transit trip growth is very strong along the light rail corridor, all the way up to the college, and particularly so along the employment areas, along sort of Payne Field and the 526 corridor. And this is where those trips are going. One of the pieces that we're going to work with Everett Transit on is also a trip growth in general to say, well, if there's more growth in land use and less growth in trips, are there areas that sort of pop out that say, hey, it might make more sense to look at how transit is provided to those areas as well? And that's something that we'll be doing in the next couple of weeks with them to go beyond just this initial look with, with, with the light rail in place. The last piece here is a look at 2035 PM peak hour level of service. And what you'll note is, I can flip back and forth, but it's somewhat disorienting. There's a lot, there's quite a bit more yellow lines on this. So conditions that are level of service D or E, but not really a great expansion in the number of red lines LOSF. That's not true of the state system. I five will congestion will continue to get more, more extreme. And that does have an effect on Everett because it tends to spill over into the city. And that's something that we'll have to think about. Well, we've worked with a lot of cities who say, we don't necessarily, we want to be cognizant of that, but it's not our job to widen our streets to accommodate overflow traffic. We've, for Tacoma was a good example of that. Whereas we've also been working recently in Federal Way who've said, well, be that as it may, we owe it to our citizens to make sure that we have some sort of maintenance of performance on Highway 99 through Federal Way, even though when we did an analysis, a lot of that traffic is regional traffic, not necessarily having to do with the city. So there's some policy choices that need to be made there. But what I will say is that it's, you know, it's not an unmanageable situation from what we're seeing at this early preliminary stage. That said, we did look at traffic volumes increase. In downtown, a lot of the roads are close to a doubling of traffic. That's a reflection of a lot of land use growth in downtown. But there's, at the same point, still a fair bit of capacity in the system. We didn't assume any widening at this first cut. That's always how we start these analyses. We say, don't add new capacity in the model yet. See what happens with the system to say, where do we want to add capacity? For example, if we added lanes in downtown, well, where do we get that space from? Does that make sense? So that's where we want to start with this. And again, work on the project list to develop, well, what do we want to do with this? But kind of the takeaway from this early look is that there will be more congestion in the city, undeniably. There will be much more regional congestion, which again paints the picture of why, why regional transit is important. But the growth in the city is, it's not, you know, it's not going to be gridlock. It's not going to look like Manhattan in downtown Everett. That's something that we can say at this early stage. So that's kind of the, where we are at the data piece, but I wanted to just sort of get into the next step. So we still have a little bit of sort of burnishing and polishing of those travel forecasts to make sure that we are capturing things correctly from the model. We'll be doing that over the next week or so. And we're going to quickly sort of transform those quantitative results and work back with public transit to say, well, what, what do we want to do? How do we want to continue our work on and refine the policy changes? What is that, that final transportation improvement plan, the capital project list look like? And then ultimately prepare the final document so that it can get into and complete with, before the, the June 30 deadline from the PSRC. So that's where we are. So with that, I will, I don't know, Tim or Alan, did you have anything to add to that?
Yes, thank you, Chris. And I do have a few things to add for the commission. First of all, thank you, Chris, for the information. And we haven't seen this before, so some of this is new information for us. But I did want to make a couple of comments about particularly the, the growth numbers that Chris had presented earlier, showing a population growth of 60,000 and job growth of 55,000 in the city. And those are numbers that were originated, excuse me, that originated with the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2040. And their growth alternatives that they looked at or actually adopted in 2008 had much higher population and job growth figures than we felt were reasonable at that time, even prior to the recession. And since the recession, we feel are even more unrealistic. We expect that, well, things will densify in the city. What we will be recommending to you when we have a final draft of the, the plan is a lower growth, both in population and employment than, than Chris just showed here based on PSRC numbers. Instead of growing to, within our current city limits, to a population of 165,000, that was the Regional Council's number, we're going to be recommending growth targets of 143,000 in population, which is based upon some, definitely some changes in our, our regulations that will accommodate more than our current land use plans will. But we will also have the capacity, land use capacity to accommodate even those high growth numbers of the PSRC's Vision 2040 numbers. We just don't think the economy will support that kind of density and redevelopment. As Chris pointed out, we are not a city of greenfields. We are a city that is, in our residential areas, almost entirely built out. And most of our development will come through either infill or redevelopment, where we're tearing down smaller buildings and building in parking lots, much taller buildings or denser buildings. And that kind of development is something that is much more difficult to predict in at least a time, timeline in comparison to going out into areas where you have forest or undeveloped land. And that is much more easy to develop, much less costly to develop. And that's naturally where the growth tends to go first before buying buildings just to tear them down and build bigger buildings. So we don't think that the regional economy is going to be strong enough even by the time 2035 rolls around to support those very high growth numbers, especially with the uncertainty of the timing of the extension of light rail to Everett. You know, we're assuming that if the light rail goes to the ballot in 2016 and is successful, that it might get here by 2035. But that probably will not be early enough for the real estate market to respond to that investment in, in a timely fashion to hit those high growth targets by 2035. In terms of employment, Chris showed Regional Council numbers showing growth in about, by 55,000 jobs above our current level, which current deployment is about 95,000. We have the capacity to accommodate that. But again, we think that it'll probably be somewhat lower than that, probably more in the range of about 140,000. These are actually identical numbers to those that the city council approved in a resolution two years ago and recommended that those be used as initial growth targets as we went through the planning process. And after going through that process with some of our fellow jurisdictions, including Snohomish County, and where they are going with their growth targets and their growth capacities in unincorporated urban growth areas, it looks as though those numbers are more realistic. And the same numbers that council put in that resolution two years ago will be the growth targets that we recommend when we have everything pulled together in a final draft for, for your review. And so I think we've talked about a number of these targets before, but just wanted to comment that the, the numbers that Chris is showing here are probably a little optimistic, probably very optimistic. And while we will have the land capacity in our new plan to accommodate that, we just don't think that all of the economic factors and, and investments necessary for those numbers to occur will align in such a manner as to make those possible. So that was one comment. Also, Chris talked a little bit about the light rail alignment. And we have, I think, shared with you in the past, and if we haven't, and I'm not sure if we have actually, but now that I think about it, we will have a conceptual alignment that is in our comprehensive plan showing the city's preference for where light rail should serve and be located in Everett, including some potential light rail transit stations. And so the map that Chris showed was also a conceptual map. I think it's probably safe to say that that'll be a little bit different in what you will see when we bring a draft forward to you in the near future. So with that, I'll pause there and see if Chris has any further comments or respond to questions the commission may have.
And just to comment, thanks, Alan, for bringing that out. We did have a meeting with the planning department to talk about, there is, there is the difference in terms of what the population forecasts from the PSRC are versus what the city is looking to adopt. The, we have the higher number in there to accommodate, well, what, if that were to occur, what does the plan need to look like? We can also look at a sort of, sort of tapered back version that's in line to say, well, are there any major, major projects that would sort of be lower in priority, assuming that that population target is not met? But it's something from sort of a regional consistency standpoint, we want to make sure that we're covered, our bases from the PSRC sort of regional consistency obligation, you'd also be smart about planning with the city. And I also thanks for bringing up the, the rail alignment, which is not adopted, obviously, by Sound Transit. And it's, it was done as a sort of proof of concept of, let's put it in there as a conceptual to see what happens in terms of the, the results. So we'll be sort of massaging that as we move forward. But from a, that, that particular concept alignment, we wanted to see, how does it perform? It's, and it's not really sort of inconsistent with either what Sound Transit's looked at or the city's piece. We just needed to provide some definition to, to actually run it through the model.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation and explanation. Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Sam?
I appreciate very much the presentation, although it's early, that's great. I mean, there's going to be a lot of work to do here. Appreciate the fact it's coming to the planning commission so early. The question I had, had to do with, with light rail coming to Everett and whether or not there's any value at all, or maybe you are looking at it already, of what would happen if light rail was delayed by 10 years or whatever might happen? You know, how bad can it be for the citizens of this community without light rail? I think it's really important that light rail come here. It's critical to our, our future. But you know, what, what happens if it gets delayed? Is, is that part of the analysis as well? Is to show how bad it's going to be?
Right. So we wanted to sort of paint the picture of, you know, what it would look like, what does that mean? But yet, what we will plan to do is to have a run of no light rail, just to say, it's almost more of a case for, you know, what, what could it look like? Again, it's the, from talking with the city, it's of course, the city's position that that be moved forward. But we will also take a look at, from an analytical perspective of what it could look like. It's, I'll say this, that it's not going to be an emphasis. It will be more of a what if, or a sort of, a text box discussion in, in the report for that piece. Again, to emphasize, we want to plan for this situation. How are we going to do that?
Good. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Zalinski?
Yeah, a couple of questions, actually. The first one has to do with coordination with other key agencies like WashDOT. Obviously, I five is pretty important in Everett. And I think that was one of your red lines, actually, was I five. And the other one is with community transit, which I understand is planning their next SWIFT line.
And is the question, what are we doing to coordinate with those agencies?
To incorporate those plans into the forecasts.
Yep. So the, that, thanks for bringing that up. We have from, from both community transit and WashDOT, what their long, their funded long range plans are assumed in, in the background modeling. So for example, those include, in the funded picture, widening on some WashDOT facilities. Again, SWIFT two is in there, but there's also an unfunded project list, which includes further, I believe, further widening on I five. I'd have to check that. But anything that's not funded as part of their PSRC regional plan that they had sort of forwarded is not included. So that's, you know, we're consistent with what their, what we consider to be their reasonably foreseeable future in terms of their planning.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yeah. I, you know, one of the things I've noticed a lot, I commute to Seattle every day, and there are people who come in from areas north, as far away as places like Stanwood or, or even La Conner. And they will drive into Everett and they will get on the Sounder train and then go the rest of the way into Seattle. And I, I've known quite a few people who are in that situation. And it seems like a lot, you know, I usually don't push parking as a, as a, as a driver for, for development. But I've noticed that a lot of the transit centers, especially the South Everett Transit Center fills up with cars. Like, you can't even get in there after like 7:30 in the morning. And then the Linwood Transit Center is like, I don't know, five times as large as, you know, Everett, Everett Station. And it fills up with cars. And it seems like, as a practical matter, you know, we, as we transition to transit, as people sort of start to wean themselves off of driving all the way in, you know, we should have to look at that, sort of that inner, people who use, and, and this is kind of related to the multimodal type of aspect of it. But one of the things I think that it's, it's awful that we have a great transit center to go, go to, but there, but there's no place to park, you know? So if I was going to advocate parking lots, it would be in the, the transit centers that we have. And maybe increasing the capacity and looking at it as a sort of an interim sort of accommodation for people who want to maybe drive a certain way in their car and then get on a, either a train or a bus.
Yeah.
That's just, just something that I've noticed. And I, I don't, it's a kind of a factor in, in the, in the station planning that I don't see sort of taken into account too much. And I actually have worked with Sound Transit quite a bit myself, so.
Yeah, that, I mean, it's definitely, the regional park and ride sort of capacity is something that I know it's, in many cities grapple with because most of the large park and rides across the region fill up very early in the morning. And clearly, you could build more of them and they would be, they would be used and facilitate transit access. But it is something, we have had some preliminary talks about, it's an important policy question of, is Everett and which parts of Everett are a destination versus an origin for regional transit? And that's something that there is not a, it's not a simple answer. I can give you my opinion, but my opinion doesn't matter. It's really the policy decisions that the, that folks like yourself can weigh in and ultimately the council will make. But that's, it's a, something that we will be talking about. What is Everett Station? It's adjacent to downtown Everett, for example. It's obviously a regional draw for, especially from the north end, people commuting on current regional transit would be even more so if light rail were to be there. But what does that mean to, is Everett a park and ride lot for Seattle? Parts of it might be, parts of it not. It's a, it's one of those important policy questions we will be asking and tackling as part of this update.
Commissioner Tisdale?
I had a couple. You talked about state routes through Everett, and you talked about five, but 529 goes, and you didn't have that in red on the map. And I was wondering why.
So the, the, the results of the analysis here are basically outputs of the model. So for 529 showing up as, as a yellow, it might be near congested. I, we'd have to pull the specific data out in the future. So we, we are analyzing all the major roads in the city, including all state, state roads in, in the, in the city. And that's, again, why is it not red? I'd have to look to see what the actual details are. But from I'd have to look to see what the actual details are, but from the model outputs, it's not sort of growing to that condition under the preliminary look that we have at this point.
And, as Michael talked about, the state connecting, how about the county roads and the adjoining Marysville and Macalteo Cities? Because as they upgrade or widen a road to get people through their cities, how does that, and probably most specifically out around the Boeing facility? Because I noticed the red there on the one road, I believe that's probably Marine View, or not Marine View, Macalteo Boulevard, you know, that's a result, anyway.
Right.
What, I guess the question is really, what goes into the modeling to?
To sort of understand the interplay, so to speak?
Yeah, of the cities that are maybe widening a road that, right now and in our plan, might not be recognized as one that we widen, they widen ours and it funnels down in our city.
Yeah, a good question. So, what we're not showing is, the model is actually a regional model, it has a lot of detail in Snohomish County, and it goes up towards South Skagit County, and then all the way down to Pierce. So, we have sort of the regional population, sort of, and flows of people in the model. What we do assume, again, is funded projects, so in Macalteo's funded capital improvement project list, if they set up, a roadway was being widened, that was assumed in there consistent with, similar to Snohomish County. So, we have that sort of, that baked into everything around there, we just, for the purposes of this initial look, we did not carry that to Everett. We said, let's just look at, what does today's infrastructure look like? To know that, well, we do have that funnel effect, so to speak, going on on certain roads, what does that mean for here, and how does that affect our decisions moving forward? So, it's accounted for, and it's, so that's reflected in those results as we see them now. And then from here, we move forward to say, do we want to match or to mirror any capacity, for example, capacity expansion that a neighboring jurisdiction may be putting, because it's otherwise going to lead to implications within Everett. So, that's something that we are, again, in the near future, will be answering those questions to, so that we can say, yes, we looked at that, and here's what we did and why we did it.
And in the final, on the population, I mean, we all understand housing affordability, and as it continues to go north, from Seattle, actually, go north, we're building this transportation's modeling off of the, yours was the 55,000 jobs and 60,000 people. That's, that is the growth target numbers inside the city of Everett, correct?
Yes.
Where do you add the growth that's going to happen in Marysville and beyond? Because, I mean, we now have been in the Growth Management Act 12-plus years or more, and we know that people are driving to affordability a lot of times, as opposed, so, how does that account so that we have a real good understanding of the transportation needs in the future?
Yeah, so, all of the, so we took the PSRC 2040, Vision 2040 land use targets for all communities regionally, and those are loaded in there, so that's why we have this little bit of difference between what the city's moving forward with. So, but it's accounted for in all the communities to the north, for example.
Although, I guess, kind of a follow-up to that is the fact that with the PSRC designating Everett as a metropolitan center, I'm wondering if there's some sort of factor that also should be figured in for, you know, attractions because of the metropolitan center, maybe for health services in the surrounding areas, and how your model takes that into account?
So, the model has detail, has some detail, and it gets to some employment categories, so it looks at office jobs versus government jobs versus manufacturing, for example. It has schools, both sort of K through 12, and universities in it, but it doesn't have a, it's a good point, you know, Providence, I think, is it still called Providence here? Yes, I don't remember with all the mergers, who's buying who these days, but Providence is a big regional medical draw. The model has that in so much as there's going to be a mix of predominantly service workers, and then in and around that area, some other types of supporting employment. That's there, but to the effect that Providence will draw longer trips, the model's not quite that sophisticated. So, it says, there's a big concentration of stuff people want to get to in this part of the city, but it's not, it's not getting, you know, it generally matches the travel patterns, but in terms of some of those unique trips, it's not going to be able to pick that up. So, it's doing, I guess, the best it can, but it's not that specific.
What about our home port for the naval center and the commissary up in Marysville? Those kinds of linkages?
The, it won't, it has, for the naval center, it has a specific, it's called a special generator, to accommodate the naval trips, but there's not a good cross-talk between, say, the commissary in Marysville and the special generator at the port. There's another special generator at Payne Field to accommodate for the fact that Payne Field employment has, basically, it draws from a bigger area than is typical for employment in the region, that's put into the model to make sure that that is captured. But, a lot of the really localized effects that you're bringing up, the model, I would say, captures those at a gross level, but not at a specific level. So, there's a fair bit of traffic between, say, Marysville and Everett, but not specifically that unique trip, per se.
And with my earlier questions, and in your modeling, as the capacities go up, does that then increase the walking and bicycling, or where does walking and bicycling fit into, you know, if more of that is on the rise with the different demographics? I mean, like, right here, by the end of this year, we'll have 600 apartments, you know, within a few blocks around here, and those people, you know, we've noticed are walk more and/or bicycle more?
Yep.
So, how will a model compensate or put that into the values?
Well, you, I mean, I can go on and on about this, you're going to get me excited for a little bit, so tell me to be quiet when I get too technical, techno-babble on you.
Not too much a technical, but.
Yeah, it does, the short answer is it accommodates that, because there's a demographic, when it looks at multifamily in Everett, for example, it says, those, the folks who live in that type of development are more prone to walking, the household sizes are smaller, the auto ownership is lower, those are built into the model, the work done that's done by the PSRC, to say that, if there's more of that growth there, you'll get more of that, those modal decisions being made, as opposed to looking at, say, household, if there was more household growth along, you know, the waterfront, for example, larger households, higher incomes, those are, again, are all factored in, they have different travel patterns, and that is reflected in the modeling.
One final. The, you keep talking about PSRC, and that's great, but, you know, there's a county-wide, or the Economic Alliance has a transportation package, you know, that's being proposed to the legislature, and a lot of that has been done by the jurisdictions, the cities and the county as a whole, to, does that get built into the model, or do you recognize, you know, they've studied congestion areas and freight mobility, and, or is everything just modeled off of what the PSRC?
Well, so, let me back up a step, and I don't, I can't answer that question specifically, because I don't know exactly what was assumed. The modeling that we're beginning with is the Snohomish County version, so to speak, of the PSRC model. So, for the Snohomish County Comprehensive Plan Update, we're inheriting those assumed projects from there. So, to the extent that Snohomish County, as part of their update, had more of those pieces in there, and I don't know if Lauren can speak to that or not, but we will have those pieces reflected. Specific to Everett, Everett gets to pick whatever Everett wants to in the future set, so we can be very specific and make a, you know, pretty, it has to be financially feasible, that's a requirement from the state, but it does not necessarily have to match a current plan. This is your plan to set that course.
Good job.
I might add to that, that the list that's prepared does come from the jurisdictions, and a lot of the projects that they bring forward are on their comprehensive plans, or six-year plans, or 20-year investment plans, and some are not. So, it's kind of a combination, but I think it generally, you could say, that fairly represents the local jurisdiction's needs.
Commissioner Jordison?
I have a less serious question. We had a vision plan that had a cable car, I believe, at one point in time, that went east and west across the peninsula, as it were?
Yeah.
And then there was an idea for one to go north and south, but I think it didn't go anywhere, and people objected, they were going to widen a street or something, and it was, it was going to be a problem, but, you know, somehow Tacoma got a cable car, and Seattle got a cable car, and Portland's had them for a while, and, you know, that would be sure a fun thing to have, you know, in the city of Everett. But, and, you know, there might even be some practicality to get you from Everett Station downtown.
Yeah, up the hill.
So, you know, I don't know if there's some kind of angle you could, you know, look at, but I wouldn't spend any time on it, but sure, sure would like to think about it.
Well, we can, we can talk with Tim and see how Public Works feels about buying, buying some streetcars, so we'll see about that. But, yeah, I mean, they are practical in some cities, and some cities have clearly gone pretty far with them, so I, you know, it's not, I wouldn't laugh it out of the room if that's what the city wants, and we can look at it, if you can pay for it.
Commissioner Zelinski, and then Commissioner Beck.
This is kind of a follow-up to Commissioner Tisdale's question about the bikes and walkways. And since you've got the map up here, you refer to it as the LOS map? Presumably, that's conventional LOS, B-C ratios, or travel times, or whatever.
Correct.
If you're going to start looking at multimodal, that could get complicated, right? Think you're going to be able to do this, pull this off?
So, it's a good question, so, there's a lot of ways to do multimodal level of service, and given sort of where, sort of schedule and resources-wise, we're going to give the city something that the PSRC has already approved, in at least a half a dozen jurisdictions for multimodal level of service, that really rates, how are you implementing the, a complete system? So, we will not be, there is a complicated way to measure level of service by looking at sidewalk width, and are there parked cars, are there trees along the sidewalk, is there a bike lane, so on and so forth. You collect about 75 pieces of data. We did that in Tukwila, it was interesting, but did it really help them plan? Not so much, just a brief aside, what we found there is that, once a road gets of a, you know, an arterial gets of a certain volume, or just as a flat-out, a higher speed limit, whatever you want to do, that methodology says your level of service is poor for peds and bikes, even though I would argue that you can provide a good environment for both of those modes on those sorts of streets, but the methodology won't give you any credit for it, so it wasn't a great planning tool. So, I don't want to go that route, because I don't think it's going to be a useful tool, and it's also really labor-intensive to pull it off. So, again, what we're going to do is something that's been accepted by a number of other jurisdictions, you know, everywhere from Kirkland, Federal Way is going to submit their, a very similar version of this soon, Bothell is another example. So, something that's been adopted, we can do, and will help move the, sort of, the conversation around multimodal planning in a way forward, but in a productive way, I think, as opposed to a complicated way.
This kind of fits within that. So, are you able to use any of the ORCA data at this point? I mean, we've had ORCA for about three years, and so, there's probably a lot of information within that, as to how people are using the transit system. So, I mean, and I'm thinking in terms of the layers, where are people coming from, where are they going, where do pedestrian improvements, where do bicycle improvements? We know where the big boardings are happening on the major corridors, but how are people using the system? Is any of that being, are we able to use any of that data?
So, I won't speak, you know, in terms of whatever transit has been able to glean from ORCA, and we haven't talked to them specifically, so it's a good point. We do have ORCA data, we've had it for a little while. The piece of information that, unless it's been cleaned from us, that it lacks, as far as I know, is it doesn't, it knows what route you got on, but it doesn't know where you got on that route, and it also doesn't know where you got off the route, but it can tell you, did somebody transfer? So, I've found it to be interesting from a transfer analysis point of view, because there's a, again, a perception that transferring is onerous, and I'll admit that, under certain circumstances, it can be, it can make a transit trip not worthwhile, but there's also, there is a lot of transferring that occurs, and if you look at certain routes, you can infer, these two have tight headways, they're transferring at a transit center, that they tend to be somewhat aligned on schedule, you do get bumps there. So, we can look at that, but it's not something that we specifically looked at for this plan, because of a lot of the limitations that that data currently carries. I wish it was a lot better than it is, it's interesting, but it's not, in terms of the travel patterns, it's not something that we can really get a lot of information out of.
Any other questions? Commissioner Adams?
Thank you for the presentation, Chris. On private business, it seems like we're seeing more and more from private business in the transportation market, especially down in San Francisco, they've got the private bus lines down there now. I know T-Mobile's looking for a parking lot in Snohomish County, I know Amazon's looking for a parking lot in Snohomish County. How do you incorporate that type of data into what you're doing in our planning?
It's a good question. We do have one scope item in our document that looks at sort of change, technological change, and how might it affect? It's not a big piece, but it's really a, it's a, it's a way to point that out, that we're going to do a look at what are called TNCs, Transportation Network Companies, that's the sort of acronym that's been given to folks like Uber and Lyft, who are changing a lot of the transportation system. And then, as you mentioned, some of these private transit systems, or private transit lines, are, they don't have a fancy acronym yet, but they're of the same sort of ilk. So, we have a brief piece that will talk about, well, what do those mean, and how might the city want to look at those in the future? We're not going to get into a deep dive, in part, because it's such a dynamic landscape, but I will say that we probably would want to have some sort of policy, sort of guidance as to, for example, if a private employer is looking for a park and ride lot for their private shuttle service, to provide access to somewhere else, what would, how does the city want to, what's a policy on that? Should we look for that? Should the city champion it? Is it something we don't want, because there's unintended consequences? We can sort of work with our experience on that to help inform a policy decision, but I think that's likely, as far as we'll be able to take that type of review.
This is a public workshop, so if there's any member in the audience who would like to ask a question or make a comment, feel free.
I would like to ask a question about where you plucked out the data for the transit. As you know, the sales taxes, what funds the transit? I ride Everett Transit, we've been on a downward spiral in terms of money available, and hence, in terms of service. So, just out of curiosity, what was the timeframe you took that data?
So, the, I can't, there's, the data gets sort of generated quarterly, and I know it's 2014, and Sarah, you may or may not know that, but I don't know if it was spring or fall of 2014 that we worked with Everett Transit to get that, for not only their system again, but also Sound Transit and Community Transit.
I am aware, because I'm on the tax committee, that Everett Transit has recently, several funds installed a system where they are able to tell how many people get on at a stop, and how many people get off as well, and we've been asked to look at that, but we're not willing to give it up too. Anyway, I have a final comment, and that would be that.
Mr. Drake?
We need to get that on the, for your comments, to get them on the microphone here, so if you could come up to the podium, please.
In terms of the discussion about ridership to the station, and having a parking garage there, or parking spaces, seems to me that, at this very point in time, Everett there or parking spaces, seems to me that at this very point in time, Everett Transit is in the process of eliminating the service to my neighborhood, the neighborhood service, I should say, in Northwest Everett, so that I wouldn't be able to come to this meeting on the bus unless I took a long walk. And this model of losing funds because of declines in sales tax and therefore cutting the service seems like it has a lot of limitations. And when you throw people off the bus, I would think they don't tend to come back. And I'm seriously thinking of buying a car and just giving up on the whole thing because it's gotten to be so inconvenient. I mean, it's, it's very inconvenient to start out with, but now, if you can't even use it after five o'clock hour, it's totally ridiculous, my way of thinking. But anyway, I would think that there must be enough people in the north end of Everett, and I know some of them who get on the train every day and go to Seattle to go to work. And if the Everett Transit system is not sophisticated enough to capture those people, when they get off that train and with them right back to their homes, I think something needs to be examined with the transit system then. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anybody else's comment? So, one question that I have, and probably the rest of the Planning Commission has, is sort of what the next steps is. You've described the existing conditions modeling and results, and somewhat of the future conditions analysis, so...
Right, so, the next steps really are here. We have the, the future conditions results now, again, at a preliminary stage. We need to clean those up to make sure that we're confident in all the bits and details there. From those results, we're going to, almost in parallel, be working on what are the policy changes and goals, if there are any, that we want to refine? And also, related to that, what is the capital project list to that? And the policy changes and goals, that's a big, that's a big, it's bigger than what you might think. It gets down to what is, what is light rail, how do we plan for it, what happens if it's not there, how should transit coordinate with that, for example? What is, how do we want to implement our bike master plan? Those sorts of things are part of that discussion. So, again, it's really a guidance document to help the city navigate forward, that if there's a question about, well, we have limited resources, what do we do? The transportation element is there to say, here's what we should prioritize and move forward with. So, those are all being sort of prepared over the next few weeks to ultimately then consolidate that into a final document and likely some technical appendices. One of our goals here is actually to make the transportation element a little bit more approachable. I wouldn't say that my mom would want to read it necessarily, but I want to make it more that she might be interested in reading it. So, taking some of the nitty-gritty out of there and making it more visionary and sort of guidance, more graphical, those are some pieces that we're, we are also doing with the document.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from staff?
Did you have any? Okay. Yeah, actually, just wanted to follow up on one of the discussion points, policy questions that was raised between the Commission and Chris. One of the comments was about park-and-ride and capacity and how we accommodate that within the city. And one of the things that, at least staff's position has been in our discussions with transit agencies, Sound Transit, when we did some work with them in the last couple of years, is that if we're going to be the type of growth center that the regional vision says that we should be, that we shouldn't be just a parking, parking lot or a parking facility for people who live outside of the RTA district to come park in Everett and catch a bus and a train to their jobs in Seattle. If we're going to grow with the number of jobs that we need to even be close to that regional vision, we really need to have that be a two-way service between Point South and Everett, and that we need to have more balance between what is going, both in the AM and the PM hours between Everett and communities to the south of us, and that we do not really want to use our best land for parking facilities unless they're multi-story type structures and you can fit a lot more on a smaller piece of land than sprawling parking lots. And so, those are some of the tenets that our land use plan and our land use capacity is based upon, is that we want to use that land for jobs and housing and not so much for parking cars for people who either don't live in Everett or don't work in Everett for the benefit of employers elsewhere. That should help support some of our economic development, those lands in that system. So, those are some basic assumptions and the policy drivers in our land use planning.
Alan, related to that, are conversations going on with, I suppose it'd be Community Transit to see what they're doing to plan for that ability and capability to bring folks into these stations on a BRT system or an expanded residential route system or whatever? As well as, if there have to be park-and-ride lots, maybe they should be kind of out, satellite facilities outside where we can capture folks out there and then bring them in by bus and then get on the light rail system.
Good question, and the answer is yes, we are talking with Community Transit, and they are planning additions to their SWIFT services with different alignments, including one that would run north along Broadway up to Marysville at some point. The more immediate one would be one that serves Payne Field, Boeing, Southwest Everett, and runs down Airport Road out to 527, and then south into Mill Creek, ultimately to Bothell as a, another SWIFT line that has frequent service and, but as for some of the more outlying areas, I know that's been a challenge for Community Transit. Those buses have to travel on the same roads that the cars do, and the alignments, US Two is a bottleneck in peak hour periods, as is I-5 in morning and especially in the evening. And so, there are some countywide planning policies that talk about the need for additional coordination amongst all the jurisdictions in the areas, particularly north and east parts of the county where the transit service is less frequent just due to the lower population and employment densities, and that's kind of a growing suburban work shed or workforce housing for job centers in Everett and places to the south. So, there's definitely a need for more planning, but initial conversations have been ongoing for, with Community Transit, but more of their focus has been on the SWIFT system and probably less on, and I can't really speak to, you know, their detailed plans, but I know that they are looking at more park-and-ride capacity in some of the outlying areas.
Does Everett have a problem with pass-through traffic, where it's traffic that's going through our town to get someplace else to get on the bus or whatever? Or is it just the traffic that shows on the maps as, that's being generated by folks in this community, either living here or working here or whatever?
I don't know if Tim has a data on that, but I know that we do have a lot of regional traffic, particularly in the congested parts of I-5 in some peak periods or during incidents will use Everett streets. I don't know if you've got any data on that.
I don't have any specific numbers to give you, but it is true, when the freeway system breaks, we see the cars coming onto Broadway and up 50, 529. And so, you've seen that before, and when an incident happens, we'll get gridlock in places that we don't normally see it in the city, and it just spills over. So, I do know that there is cut-through traffic, but it, but it isn't the majority. It's a significant, but not majority.
I'd actually speak a little bit to that. I'm Michael Brick, I work for Tim in traffic engineering. It has been several years since we conducted a study looking at license plates, but approximately five or six years ago, we conducted a study looking at license plates along the Broadway corridor between Everett Mall, the off-ramp to Broadway near downtown, and then entering 529, heading across the flats. We found that between twenty and thirty percent of the traffic that we observed near Everett Mall was traveling through all the way to 529 north of East Marine View Drive. However, approximately a quarter of that traffic was taking quite a while traveling through Everett, much longer than just the travel time. So, they were likely making pass-through trips, either stopping at businesses, maybe picking up children. So, it was approximately fifteen percent to twenty percent of the traffic was actually just traveling straight through, and then another five or ten percent was making some sort of stop and conducting business in Everett while passing through on their way to northbound 529. And again, that data was about five years old. It was before the most recent round of improvements by the state on I-5, so those numbers may have changed.
Commissioner Jordison?
Just a follow-up comment. I certainly don't think we should squander our land with surface lots for park-and-rides, but on the other hand, when, if you were to say, if someone was to say, well, we don't want to be a park-and-ride on the way to Seattle, I don't, you know, I mean, that sounds almost a little self-righteous to me. I don't know what, if we were a park-and-ride on the way to Seattle, I don't know what, what all the fuss would be about. I mean, there's a lot of ways to manage that, and it might not be a bad thing. And it might even actually, you know, overall, in the big picture, it might be a good thing. So, I don't know, you know, there are different ways of looking at that, you know, so, just a comment that I have.
The purpose of my comment was just to respond to the regional vision, and if, if we are to aspire to be that metropolitan center, then if our vision was to be a bedroom community where everybody went to work in Seattle, then we might take a different policy with our land use and our transportation system than if we're to be a job center and a metropolitan center and based on the regional vision, is why we feel that our best land should be used for housing and job-generating activities and not just a, you know, parking reservoir for the employers further to the south. That's, that's the purpose of my comment.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments for tonight? All right. Thank you very much. We will meet again then, May nineteenth.